I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting of October 23. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock with the adoption of the agenda. I have an item, uh, thirteen two, May Tea Week. Any other additions?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Administration has a couple of items. Uh, ten three, we presented the strategic plan on Saturday. Council didn't have time to go through it, so we brought it back tonight. Also, if we may, uh, in the in-camera, in-camera session, uh, eighteen two, water projects. And eighteen three, senior management positions. The second one should have been added, that's our error. That was carryover from your last meeting.
So, the strategic plan was supposed to be during the...
It was on your agenda on Saturday.
Well, it wasn't part of the budget. I'd like to kick it over to the Committee of Hall, because I haven't even had a chance to look at it.
Not a problem. Yep, we can bring it back next week, or...
Is Council all right with that? Okay.
Committee of the Hall are the first meeting in November?
Could be the first meeting in November.
Okay. Then, Madam Mayor, there's no ten three.
All right, um, a motion to recess for the org meeting?
Accept the agenda.
Oh, sorry. Oh, adoption of the agenda with those changes. Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. All right, so a motion to recess for the org meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. I'd like to call the org meeting to order. All in favor? Carried. Uh, adoption of, uh... The, uh, Deputy Mayor, adopt him? Are we appointing him? All right, anybody want to run for Deputy? For crying out loud. Okay, move to adopt the agenda. Somebody? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. Deputy Mayor? This is an appointment for one year?
I move for forty-nine.
You accept? Anybody else?
So is it like a nomination and then a motion?
It's a nomination and then a mo... Well, it's a vote.
Okay. Just, just, just wondering what the exact procedure.
And it's a secret ballot. Okay, congratulations, Deputy Mayor. So the acting, um, acting mayors, you can see Counselor Librian, Counselor Welkey, Counselor Anderson, and Counselor Jessman, and this is the rotation. Uh, and it's in alphabetical order. Is everybody good with that? Oh, yeah, where is Counselor Lambert?
Counselor Lambert just fell off. He was the last six months.
You made it through.
You made it through.
It was a rough summer.
Where the heck were you? All right, do you need a motion for those?
No, Madam Mayor, you made that motion in twenty-twenty-one.
The council committee, so the approval and the adoption of the council committees. How is everybody feeling about their committees? Let's start with Deputy Mayor. Does anybody want to challenge into those committees?
No.
No? Which ones are you on? Well, let's just go through them. Airport beautification. Um, is myself and Counselor Jessman? Counselor Jessman, are you willing to stay on that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, I will stay on there as well. Assessment Review Board, um, I'm off of it. Does someone else want to step in? Okay. Do you have your course?
Yep.
For assessment or something?
Have to check with Liddy tomorrow.
The short one or the long one? One day or four day?
It was four days.
That one, that's...
Well, perfect.
I've got...
Does this, didn't Liddy went out? Did some of you others take it?
I didn't do that one, I did.
Okay. I thought all of you did, that's why I... Mark? Don't do it, because then you have to go to the... Okay, Banner of Remembrance, um, Counselor Welkey and Counselor Librian. Okay?
I can remain as an alternate.
Okay. High Level Bursary, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Lambert, and Counselor Welkey.
I would like to stay on that one.
Yep, that's my favorite committee.
Uh, High Level SETI, if we ever have another meeting, Counselor Lambert?
Stay on there as well.
Okay.
I'd like to my go to my first meeting at least.
Intergovernmental Negotiations, Counselor Lambert, Mayor, Deputy Mayor? Want to stay on there?
Yes.
IMPC, Counselor Anderson and Counselor Lambert.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the inter-municipal subdivision, Deputy Mayor? Counselor Jessman? You better hope there's a meeting before March... No, you're done.
This is March of twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, but he was, he's certified to twenty-twenty-two. You want to recertify with a four-day course? Oh, is it?
No.
Okay, we'll take you off. Deputy Mayor? Counselor Librian? Okay. Is there anybody else certified?
I am, but I can't be on.
Why?
Because I'm on the IMPC.
Movie and Film, Counselor Welkey, Counselor Librian?
I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? If you want to, please jump in. Ready? No, sorry, Northwest Alberta Regional Emergency Deputy Mayor, Counselor Jessman, Counselor Lambert. Subdivision Development, Deputy Mayor, Counselor Jessman, do you want to recertify?
No.
Uh, Counselor Librian, you good? Okay. The Municipal Emergency Advisory Committee, myself, Counselor Jessman and Counselor Anderson.
I'm good.
Everybody's good there? Boreal Housing, I'm, would like to stay. And Clark is off. Yes. Community Futures, Counselor Welkey, Counselor Librian?
Is the Administration made that point now, or is it separate matter?
It's a separate matter.
Yeah, the members at large are your next agenda item.
Uh, Counselor, where am I now?
Community Futures.
Community Futures, Welkey and Librian?
I'll stay.
Jan's keeping it close to his chest. Uh, I will stay on the community rail. Golden Range, Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, does somebody want the alternate? Okay, I guess I'll stay. Policing Committee, Counselor Jessman?
Yeah, I plan to stay.
Okay, Deputy Mayor? Okay. Uh, High Level District Chamber, Counselor Lambert?
I'll stay.
Counselor Anderson?
Um, yeah, I'll stick around.
High Level Municipal Library Board, Anderson, Counselor, staying?
Uh, yes, I'll stay on the library board.
Counselor Librian? Okay. High Level Transportation, Counselor Anderson?
I'll stay on that as well.
Counselor Welkey?
Forgot I was the alternate, but I'll, uh, I'll stay. Counselor Anderson is stellar at going to, going to meetings.
Mackenzie Frontier Tourism, Counselor Welkey?
Um, I regret I haven't been participating as the lead on that, and me, my, to your husband, um...
I'm off.
You're off?
Yeah.
I'll stay on.
Okay.
I'll go on as alternate.
Okay. Not a few, it was all year.
Hey, my schedule's opening up. It's starting to open up.
Um, did they have a golf tournament last year? So should we keep this on, or...
Let's try for one more year.
Okay. Mackenzie Regional Charity Golf, Ju... Uh, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Jessman? Counselor Jessman? Okay.
Sure.
Nail, I'll stay, Deputy Mayor? Oh, oh, yeah, Regional Waste, myself and Deputy Mayor. I'll stay, because I'm just learning. Uh, Northern Elected Leaders, uh, myself and Deputy Mayor? November twelfth?
November seventeenth.
Yeah. Where? Northern Lakes, uh, Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I'll stay on.
And Counselor Welkey?
Yeah, I can stay as the alternate.
Uh, Northwest Fetal Alcohol, Counselor Welkey?
I will stay on as a...
Does somebody want to slide in as the alternate? He never calls you.
Sometimes.
Doesn't write.
The last meeting I did.
What? Okay, Counselor Librian? Uh, Northwest Sire, I'll stay, Deputy Mayor? Things are shaken up, you better stay. Uh, Peace Library, Counselor Anderson?
Yeah.
Uh, ready? Does someone want to step into my spot there? Deputy Mayor?
I'll stay, we have two members on.
Yeah, I know. I was asking if someone wants to slide into my spot on there. Okay, then I'll stay. Upper Hay, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Jessman? Uh, the Water North Coalition... Oh, sorry, I thought, yeah, I saw your pen. Water North, that's a big pen.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
Looks big on the screen. Water North Coalition. Oh, I can't do this one. Keith was sort of the lead on it. Uh, Counselor Jessman, do you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, you'll go into the lead and I'll be your alternate if that... Because they have their meetings, like, in really obscure places.
Yeah, there was a notice not long ago that way, so, yeah.
All right. So can we have a motion to... Accept these committees?
I like that motion.
Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. So the next, uh, the next agenda item is to appoint members of...
Oh, sorry.
What?
Was that this year? I'm just flipping through the... There's still banner of remembrance stuff?
That's for the...
That's for the... Oh, I'm flipping through. Do I have those?
I just wondered, do we have to acknowledge this, please?
Yeah. Where was they?
They were right after the committee list, Madam Mayor.
On the digital copy of...
Oh, that's the, that's the committee members, or the new members.
Oh, yeah, that's it there.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so under the, um, uh, Banner of Remembrance, uh, there's two members that have put their names forward. Corporal Paul Stewart and Corporal Jonathan Widdore. Counsel? All in favor? Carried. The following members have expressed their interest in being reappointed to the Banner of Remembrance. Uh, Simon Rogers, Cheryl Welkey, and Randy Hume.
There's a spell check incorrect, there's two L's in it.
Uh, W E L K. Two L's in her first name.
I apologize, my spell check, and I...
Um, do I have to accuse myself from this appointment?
There's no...
There's no remuneration.
Oh, I thought there was on the committees. Not on that one?
It's a task force.
Well, it's a committee.
Oh, it's a committee now? Yeah, it is a committee.
I thought, I thought that there was. So...
Yes, go outside the door.
Jan excused himself.
Could I have a motion? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. Um, for the, um, Boreal Housing, Sylvia Kennedy has submitted her name. As a public member, all in favor? I guess I'm making the motion. Carried. Film Task Force, uh, Jordan Mascale has submitted, as well as Adam Kent. Somebody want to make a motion? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried.
Uh, Madam Mayor, just for council's information, uh, the library board appointments were also advertised at the same time. They'll take those to their next board meeting and make recommendations to council on their appointments.
The next item is the calendar for council meetings. You may? And why is that? You don't have to be here. Is that your red line in the sand? Is council good with switching those to Wednesday?
Which dates were the...
May.
Just wherever it was filled on a Tuesday. Still not out there, uh, October fifteenth? No?
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move with the man.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. The next is your review of the Code of Conduct.
Uh, Madam Mayor, this is placed on the agenda at the recommendation of the Deputy Mayor from, uh, the session he had attended.
From the session he attended?
So, um, at the Alberta municipalities, one of their information sessions was on council code of conduct, and I attended that session. And it's a requirement of the MGA that this, um, that every council now have a code of conduct, and it also has to be reviewed every four years. And we are just slightly past the four years, so we need to at least review the, uh, policy to stay in compliance with the MGA.
And is there any changes?
That's for council to decide.
Well, did you note any?
There's lots of different versions, um, of this out there. I reviewed it, some of the wording isn't necessarily...
Okay, well, let's table to the Committee of Hall.
I don't know if Administration has any recommendations. It's a fairly straightforward, it's just something that council needs to be aware of. We do have to have it in place. Um, our policy, in my review, seems to be extremely comprehensive, and everyone has different drafting preferences and stuff like that, but I have no problems with this as it's written. I'm not sure about anybody else.
Just have a question.
I didn't have any problems with it, I didn't see any.
Um, I haven't reviewed it myself, but, um, I thought there were some new, uh, code of conduct, um, pieces that were added or spoken about. Am I... I ju... I don't, i- if anybody can verify, was there something new? Um, or, or was it just the fact that they stressed it had to be, um, I guess I'm not on here?
I think every council, I haven't heard anything new.
Okay.
The, uh, maybe, Madam Mayor, just to address Counselor Welke, I believe the changes would have affected your, um, your order of business. There were some changes in the Act that took the, um, ad hoc away from the mayor, um, though your, um, council procedural actually states that the mayor is always ad hoc. So there are a few little changes, but when we reviewed them, we're reviewing the council procedure anyway, but most of those changes in the MGA seem to be complied with with the council procedural manual. I think that's where the main changes were, was.
Okay, I thought I just had heard something, so I just was looking for...
We can review it against...
Yeah.
Think, um, and this is going back a few years when they did the last rewrite of the MGA, it used to be a recommendation that councils had a code of conduct, and in the last rewrite of the MGA, they made it mandatory to have a code of conduct. And that's where the every four years comes in. And so that's why I think when we did this in twenty-eighteen, that four years was added in there. It's to be reviewed following the, the municipal election. So this should have been reviewed, um, last year, which is why we're out of date. So Administration should probably put this on the agenda to review, um, following the election in twenty-four-five.
At the inaugural meeting of council, yeah.
How did you know it was up for doing?
I asked Administration what our date was, to see whether it needed to be reviewed.
I thought we weren't acting accordingly.
Well, you should have hears, heard some of the stories that were...
Oh, this came from your...
Course, or the information. So an interest, here's an interesting question that came up. So a mayor who was not at a council, uh, an in-camera council session, apparently an altercation between two counselors broke out during the in-camera session, and the question was whether or not the mayor could be advised of what had happened in the in-camera session when the mayor wasn't there, and what the mayor's role would have been, right?
I, I wasn't...
Oh, you didn't go to that one?
I didn't go to that one.
But that was the question.
It was in camera?
It was in camera, so...
The mayor can't do anything about it.
So no fisticuffs in camera.
When I'm not here.
Well, if there is, you don't have to worry about it.
I know.
So this probably needs to be added to, um, a future meeting to go through and pass it, right?
Yeah. Well, and if there's, if I'm to be removed from all ad hoc committees, then our procedural bylaw needs to be looked at as well.
The procedural bylaw does state that the mayor is... So the, I believe the change in the Act was is that the mayor is no longer, it's, it no longer rates the mayor in as ad hoc. Council must appoint the mayor if they want to continue that, and our procedural bylaw does state the mayor is ad hoc. So that was a change in the procedural bylaw. It doesn't affect your procedure. Uh, we are, uh, part of the strategic plan. We will be reviewing your orientation, uh, package and have that to you sometime in the spring, because we need it ready for next year's, uh, the following year's general election. So...
That's my red line to die on. Yeah. All right.
Madam Mayor, if you could, if council would like to accept that as information, and then we'd have a note that you have reviewed.
Because, uh, can someone move for information? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Motion to come out of recess? I lost my agenda again. Oh, yeah, motion to reconvene the regular meeting. Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. All right, the October minutes, October tenth. Could I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I'd just step on Counselor Welkey's toes, but in the council reports, I think he was also at the Alberta Municipacy, Municipalities Convention, the day ahead of us. He was there the twenty-sixth as well.
Oh, thank you.
And then, um, in the... Resolution three fifty-one twenty-three, um, allowing me to submit an op, uh, nomination for ALERT's Community Advisory Committee. It just doesn't make sense the way it's written. That council supports Deputy Mayor Langford's, um, application to the ALERT, so the acronym. And it's the Citizen Advisory Committee, yes, as a new amendment.
We have a couple of extra words between nominations and nominations.
And then it's the Alberta Association of Police Governance nomination. So those are my only two amendments. I'll move with those amendments.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. The Committee of Hall meeting minutes? Could I have someone move to accept them if there are without errors?
I'll move the Committee of the Hall minutes.
Thank you. All in favor? I keep losing my agenda. There's too many agendas. Where are you reporting? I know. So for my report, I did send it. It was short, sweet. But I did have a letter from, from Rainbow, or from the Territories thanking Hay River. Did administration receive one? Oh.
The general letter from the town of Hay River about the emergency responders?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get that in the next agenda.
Okay.
We also have a number of cards that we have received from people in the Territories thanking them for our support.
I'd just like to, yeah, I'd like to be able to read that letter to the town of High Level because they were part of it as well, you know, for taking in and supporting and, doesn't matter, you can put it in the next agenda package. I did want to just comment on the, on the meeting I had with Alan Bell because in our Caribou Range report that we put out when I was on the Caribou file, it did say that if there was a one percent impact of fire, that it would trigger another report, we'd have to do another report, and there'd be a review of the entire range, and we might have to give up more land, and I don't know what else. But it is, in Caribou Range, it is, there was a seven to eight percent overall trigger, so somewhere along the line, we are going to be probably facing the government again. There's been a lot of concerns that since the Rainbow, or since the report has come out, that the government hasn't done anything that they promised in the report, and there hasn't seemed to be any progress by the government of Alberta with the industry. And lo and behold, they found a magical herd that they'd never known about in Hay, in Rainbow. And this is now putting pressure on the Chinchaga Range because it overlaps with, with our Bistou Range, and the, the biologists found this mysterious herd. So the government wants to put a ten-year moratorium on the land again. So this is concerning, so we await, you know, actual, actual, this is just reports going back and forth between industry and the bureaucracy, so we'll see what happens. I thought probably that herd migrated from B.C. Yes?
So the discovery of a ghost herd by a biologist, does it require any verification from other parties, or do they just take the word of an individual?
They're government biologists, so. I don't know. We haven't got any report. I have not heard from the government since the day I walked out of that building. We, I mean, Northwest S.A.R. did, and Haley was there, we did, we went through the report, put all our, you know, concerns there, put them forth to the government, and nothing came of it.
Is all of Northwest S.A.R.'s current camera data been evaluated yet? Or were you just gathered?
It's coming in now. The third year is come, the, they're picking up the cameras now.
So it is possible that Northwest S.A.R.'s cameras may also confirm?
No, because we didn't have any cameras up in the industry.
Oh, in that area? Oh.
They're over in Cam, or they're over in, what?
Caribou.
Yeah, go ahead.
Caribou Mountain.
What?
They're in the Caribou Mountains.
Yeah.
Not by.
And we did have some in Chinchaga, but not up, as far as Rainbow Lake.
Interesting, okay.
So that's, I just wanted to add that to my report. And that's everything. Did I? Oh, well, I didn't have time to report on. I did attend Northwest S.A.R., and at that point, they, they didn't have that, all of that knowledge. I'm sure they have it now. I haven't received it. This is just through, through industry that I got this information. Any questions? You attended Northwest S.A.R., you reported. I left it for you because I always take your glory. Well, I'll report on what you didn't hear. All right, could I have someone move my report?
I'll move the mayor's report.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Deputy Mayor?
So on October twelfth, I attended the Mackenzie Regional Waste Management Committee meeting, the same one as the mayor. Also on the twelfth, attended the Northwest S.A.R. Board Meeting. On October seventeenth, attended the Upper Hay Regional Forest Public Advisory Committee meeting. The issue of the trigger for the review because of the fire was raised, and the reps from Tocco did not think that the province was going to do a review despite the fact that there had been a significant burn. Some of the key highlights, obviously, from the summer fire activity within F fourteen, which is the area over by Rainbow Lake, in terms of currently harvestable timber, they lost sixty percent of the harvestable timber in F fourteen, and in F twenty-six, which is the big one that encompasses Rainbow Lake, they lost fourteen point two percent. The hundred and fifty thousand cubic meters that were lost to the fire in the Blue Angel Yard, on the other side of the Tocco River, or sorry, the Chinchaga River, was enough wood to run that mill for twenty days. They currently don't think that this is going to have any impact on their long-term harvesting plans. Tocco annually at capacity harvests, harvests zero point five percent of their FMA. So, in other words, they would never completely harvest the entire FMA in any event, even on a two hundred, while it would be a two-hundred-year cycle for them to do the entire area, but certainly they can't really sustain many years like this. Apparently, their cut is based on a seventy-year growth cycle, and just because of the volume that we have up here, they're just so far below that threshold that it's not an issue. But they had speculated that there will likely be at least one mill in the province closed within the next five years, because there are a number of mills that operate within percentages of that seventy-year cut rate to fulfill a sufficient quota to keep the mill open. So they didn't identify any areas or, or specific mills, but they said that certainly was going to be a possibility. Obviously, everyone's going to be harvesting burnt wood, at least this winter, and perhaps into next. However, West Fraser can't simply run burnt wood. They have to mix a certain amount of green wood to get their, their product. They can't just use nothing but burnt wood. Then on October.
Just a second for your, for your, for your, they, they don't think that the province is going to trigger a review? The federal government will trigger that review.
Sorry, they didn't think the feds or the province would trigger the review, was their information. Then on October eighteenth, attended the Invest Alberta Workshop put on by Ready. And then also October eighteenth, attended the Ready Board Meeting. And then on October twenty-first, attended the Budget Meeting.
So how was the Invest Alberta?
It was very similar to when the previous manager, Julia, Julia, I forget her last name, was up. They talked about what companies look for when they're coming into an area, sort of the site selector. So many of the programs or businesses that they deal with are very confidential, even with Invest Alberta, as to exactly what they're looking to set up. They sort of set out the criteria, this is what we're looking for, you know, in terms of land space, you know, whether they're looking for something that they can burn, power, water, those kinds of things. Available workforce is key, and there was one potential opportunity that we may fit the criteria for, so some information was going to be shared with Andrew with Ready, and maybe this region can, can put forward something. So lots of times, they said they really don't have any information about what the business is looking to set up, just that they're looking for locations within this province. They're actively marketing the province throughout the world, trying to get as many new investment possibilities in Alberta as they can.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Anderson?
October twenty-first, I attended the Budget Meeting. I have no committees to report on this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jessman?
October twenty-first, I attended the Budget Meeting, and I have no other meetings to report on.
Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
On October twenty-first, I also attended the Budget Meeting, and I have no meetings to report in the Grand Ole Miss.
Counselor Librian?
On October eleventh and eighteenth, I attended the E O E P course on public engagement, and then on the twenty-first, the Budget Meeting as well. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Welke?
On October eleventh, I attended the teepee, Town Teepee Raising behind Town Hall here with administration and staff. It was a great experience and good to learn from the instructor, who was up to teach us how to put it up. And October twenty-first, I attended the Budget Meeting as well, and that's all I have to report.
And how come the door's facing the west?
It's not. It's facing the east.
Good job.
Was that a test?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, east, east it is.
I was in there, someone's lit a fire in there. Anyways. Thank you, everyone. Could I have a motion to accept those? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. Anything on the action list for review? Could I have someone move that, please?
Audit updates?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
He said audit update.
An audit update.
I believe that was forwarded to council last week, the latest exchange between the auditors and our finance department. They did contact us today with an invoice.
Yeah. But yeah, since the communication that we had after they asked us to update them, we haven't had any comments from the answers of the five items that they asked us for, so we haven't had any comments since then. So we will do a follow-up. They did send an invoice over today, so that was this evening, so I'll do a follow-up in the morning on their invoice, and also an update of a progress update, not so much a itemized update, but a progress update on where they are based on the financial statement.
So is that, do we get progressive invoices from them, and this is just one of those, or is this the final invoice?
Normally, we get two invoices. We get an interim and a final, so this is our second invoice, so I'll have to clarify with them if they're expecting this to be the final, or if we are supposed to be expecting more.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I was just surprised by the email that administration got back from Metrics that maybe explains some of the miscommunication, that their emails go into sort of a database that some assistant retrieves on occasion, and once they have it, they fan it out. I thought that was.
No, but that wasn't what it read. It said if you send it by courier.
But that's an electronic portal. That's not physical, so.
Is that the same as our mapping?
No, so what the email was referring to is they, they have like an upload portal that we talked about before, that we upload information to this portal, which they do call their courier. So my understanding is that we need to contact them when we update it because they're just not sure when it gets checked, and I think the wording was that you never know pretty much when it's going to get checked, so. So we will definitely make the calls and messages if there is anything uploaded to their portal.
But you did have communication with them on, when you uploaded from here on the sixteenth?
Yeah, they did respond with, with those comments, yes.
Madam Mayor, just, just clarification, it's like Dropbox. So you just drop files in, but they're not checking.
I don't know why everybody doesn't use the same language. Dropbox, courier, mapping, portal.
Okay, but I was just surprised that they're waiting for this information. We're sending it where they've asked us to, and they're not checking.
Maybe they have others' audits to do.
Director Phillips just said, for us to upload this information, but then have to send them a separate email or call to let them know, like that.
Do you send an email, do you send an email or a receive thing when you send an email?
No.
Really? I do. Counselor Lambert?
Just a question for Director Gavin in regards to the last meeting. We talked about the meetings between Powerwood Corp., and she said she might have an update by the next meeting, and then also an update on the Rural Renewal Stream application.
Good evening, council, and Madam Mayor, thanks for the question. I haven't had an update on land purchase since the last meeting. I did try calling today and left a voicemail and sent an email, so I'm hoping that I'll get a response this week. And then the renewal stream, no updates since they asked me for further information that I submitted on October second.
Thank you.
Counselor Welke?
Any updates on our fire service agreement with the Dene Toa?
That, the last conversation I had between, with the Dene Toa, and, and sorry, that's not my last communication with Mr. Asus, but on this was that that was supposed to be discussed at the October fourth meeting between the two councils that was canceled. They're waiting to meet with council before they sign that.
So do we have another meeting planned to replace that meeting that was canceled?
Right, currently, I believe most of them are out of town for the next couple of weeks. I know Jordan isn't available in town for, I think, until week after next.
Perhaps we should schedule another meeting if that's what they're waiting for?
Well, yeah, like, I think we need to schedule a meeting, but.
We reach out, and generally, they give us dates.
Okay, I, I guess as long as we, yeah, we're doing as much as we can to, to hold a meeting of that nature.
Any other questions? All in favor? Carried. I will reach out to the chief again. Upcoming events? Any questions on that? If not, could have someone move, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Main Street rehabilitation?
Madam Mayor, this is a rising report from your Committee of the Whole Meeting to adopt the design that was presented by the engineers and to proceed with a STIP application, or Strategic Transportation Infrastructure Program application.
That was my rise and report. I'll move the recommendation.
Are you're going to move that recommendation with the lighting?
Yes. The STIP funding isn't going to cover that, but.
Well, I know what the STIP funding covers. Um.
To me, the lighting is the key part. If we could only do something, my, what would be to do the lighting?
Any questions? Counselor Lambert?
Just a question for administration. Uh, I believe Counsel Librian brought it up last week with the lighting on, where, like where there is new lighting already. Have we had any issues with the foundations of those moving at all? No?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Um, we had a little bit of water problem that took all the wooden structures out of there, but the streetlights did not move that I'm aware of.
So none of the wooden structures are in the new plan, correct?
No.
Okay.
It's all concrete.
Okay, thank you.
You're, so each one of these avenues, debenture levy and reserve will be?
It's, it's, sorry, Madam Mayor.
So we're going to come, uh, we're, we're hoping to get out of that three point one million dollars, one point five from STIP and, uh, take some two hundred and thirty-nine out of, out of, uh, building fund. And that would leave a balance of one point three million to be funded from debenture levy or reserve, which, which?
That decision is council's.
I know that, but are we going to, uh, make sure we have those figures before we?
Pardon?
No, we haven't already.
I believe that we had recommended in our, um, three-year plan for the roads that we were going to do, that there would again be a general one percent, the one mil levy on the entire municipality to go towards this project. So about five hundred and sixty or so thousand will come from that. And then council will have to decide where the balance comes from.
Yeah, so we're gonna, yeah, my God, I think it's too much money, but whatever.
Uh, Madam Mayor, this, this council will be brought back the final figures once the tenders go out. So, and you'll also, uh, be probably likely reviewing this during your final budget in the spring as well.
I don't, I think four hundred and twenty-five thousand is too much for the lighting. I think that, uh, that people will be, um, asked to pay that one percent levy or that one mil levy. And then they'll be asked to pay from, for, for a debenture, like, that's double dipping.
Well.
Yeah, well.
We did the same thing on a hundred and third, so I'm not sure where the issue is.
Well, I, this one is like a little more money.
Not much.
Well, but we're not finished it. We're just finished a portion of it. But whatever it's, I'm one vote.
It's finishing the whole street. It needs to be re- rehabbed, not just a portion. It's doing it all.
But we're not doing the curbing or the sidewalks. It's just going to be?
That includes sidewalks and curbs where it's required.
No. The only part that's not being done is that one block section of the post offices, other than lighting.
Right.
Lighting will be added.
Okay, I haven't even voted, I said. You can't convince me. All right, who's your motion? You were a rise and report. All in favor? Carrie. Against me. All right. Oh, sorry, Counselor Jessman, I didn't even see if you were in favor. Onto the, um, residential waste collection.
Uh, Madam Mayor, administration has put forward a briefing note, uh, requesting that council designate Wednesdays as, as well as Thursdays for residential waste pickup. Uh, we've met with the contractor who is, uh, in instituting what is called the Corato system, which is the large bin pickup from the side of the road. Um, they're concerned that the, in the initial stages of this transition, that they may not be able to get the, all of the residential pickup done on the same day. So they have divided the town into two sections, uh, by the map that, that is attached. And that map will go out in the paper and be advertised this week. Um, those areas will be picked up on Wednesdays and the remaining parts of the residential area will be picked up on Thursdays. Uh, if council approves that change, we will begin distributing the waste, uh, carts that work with this Corato system on November the third. And the area that's picked up on Wednesdays will be picked up using those carts on November the eighth. If we will then, um, the remaining part of town will have garbage pickup as it currently is on November the ninth. And then we will begin distributing those carts to the remainder of town. And the following week, on the Wednesday the fifteenth and Thursday the sixteenth, it will be picked up by Corato cans. So everything will transition. Uh, and we have, we're, we're putting together an FAQ. We'll have a lot more information. It'll hit our website here and the paper over the next several weeks.
So are our garbage cans infrastructure now? The goal says to identify, address new and aging infrastructure.
Madam Mayor, appears your CIO forgot to change the strategic plan item. It's a form of infrastructure, though.
The other thing was, like, the request, what does designated, like, the areas of town designated by administration from time to time? Does that mean we'll change it?
It, it may change over time, depending on how much they can, uh, collect in any given time or in any given day. We don't expect it to. If new subdivisions are added, that would be allowed the system to, um, to be increased. There are some areas of town where lots are being sold and houses are being developed. So it could increase waste collection on one day versus the other. Um, the contractor's pretty convinced that this shouldn't change. Um, what may change is if the system does speed up, it, it may possibly go back to a one-day pickup.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I just, uh, looking at this map, I find it a little bit hard to kind of understand. And I'd like to see it come out with a little better, um, boundaries more defined. Because, like Deer Ridge Drive, is that all of Deer Ridge Drive? Uh, Beaver Ranch Drive, is that all of Beaver Ranch Drive? Uh, you know, it's got some of them that are cut off on corners. So are they a Wednesday and a Thursday? Um, it's, so I'd like to see that be more.
So, so Madam Mayor, uh, the only areas that will be Wednesday are those who are outlined in black. So the, the lots that are blacked out.
Ah, I see, okay.
Yeah. So the others are just on there for reference, which, uh, we also asked, uh, when we put the map together, we put as many points of reference as possible on the map because High Level's necessarily not recognizable from the air, but it is from the ground. So, yeah, any of the, so any of the lots that are what we call the B, C, and D lots, so the Bjornson area, the Chonkley area, and the Deer Ridge, um, Dogwood area, those are all Thursdays. The older sections of town will be on Wednesdays. This is also designed for the newspaper, which isn't in color.
Counselor Lambert?
I'm assuming this is the only map going out?
Uh, this will be the map that goes out this week, um, giving notice of the distribution in this area. But, um, we'll change the wording as we expand the program.
Yeah.
The, the, the problem with putting maps in the newspaper is it's all grayscale.
Yeah.
So the website could be a little more, uh, defined.
I was just going to suggest, I mean, I, I feel like people are going to be confused by this, um, considering, I mean, Counselor Anderson was a little confused already. Um, especially considering if you look at, on a hundredth Ave, we have the two Gramson Apartments or condos, and only one of them's highlighted, the other one's not. So.
Actually, neither of the Gramsons are highlighted. They have a bin, but the Greenway condos are picked up off the street.
Okay. And some people might be confused by that. I mean, I guess the ones that are living there won't be, but, um, I would just like to see maybe one that shows, you know, both areas of town and, and one that says, you know, Wednesday, one that says Thursday on there. Just people aren't confused.
What we could probably do is draw a line and just make one pink and one blue that is just highlights that entire section of town. Um, what we did try to, we didn't want to put the Gramson place one in there and give the impression that they would get the cans when they're actually working off a common bin right now.
Okay.
Counselor Welke?
Um, I just wanted to comment. I think we can all agree this is a fantastic initiative that we've been, you know, waiting for. Um, I'm sure there's going to be challenges initially when this is rolled out as there would have been in any municipality that started this, but nothing's being reinvented here. And I think, you know, maybe after a couple cycles, it'll all be perfectly fine. But I'm sure people, some people are going to be confused. Some, you know, some pickups are going to be, I think the, uh, contractor said he's going to have one or two, um, runners as well with them, like they normally do now, just to help position cans and things, just initially to, to get it going. But in the end, I think this will be smooth and everyone will comply. And, you know, it'll, it'll be a, a great, uh, a great additional service to the town, so.
Okay. Could I have some, oh, sorry. Counselor Librian?
I was just wondering if, if, um, we're going to do a redesign on the map, is it possible for us to put this out with the water bill?
Oh, that's the intention. Uh, Director Phillips?
Yes, so our intention is we are going to do an insert with the water bill that is going out at the, um, I guess it'll be the beginning of the month. And at that time, hopefully we'll have, um, Friday is when, November third is when we will have the billing out. But we'll have our public works team already delivering bins. And with the delivery of the bins, um, we are going to include, uh, like a plastic bag with the, the day that their garbage pickup is going to be with like a little info insert, um, a map and any information, um, and also information for LMP disposal. So if they have any questions regarding, um, the bin placement, et cetera, then, and also if there are, um, businesses like condominiums or apartment buildings that this might not work for tenants, then they have that option to contact LMP to look at other options.
All right, could I have a motion? No. It's asking for a review and approval.
Move the recommendation.
All in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
All right, so, um, I received a letter from Bobby Paul. Uh, it is Métis Week, the week of, um, November sixteenth, which is the anniversary of Louis Riel's execution. And this is devoted to commemorating the sacrifices of Métis who continue to work towards the rights and recognition as a distinct nation. Um, so there will be, um, things going on that week. So be, on behalf of the Fort Familien Métis District fifteen, it's now District fifteen, as the new citizens represented, representative, Bobby would like to host a flag raising ceremony and honor the Métis people and their founding of development of communities in the region, cause it's the entire region. And they're going to be hosting a lot of activities. And they would like to host, uh, flag raising with the town of High Level on March thirteenth. Uh, they'd have an opening prayer, the national anthem, the Métis anthem, words from dignitaries, and hot chocolate coffee and donuts.
You said March.
Oh, I said November thirteenth. Oh, jeez, November thirteenth. Um, so, yeah, they would like the town to raise a Métis flag. Something council would, they will present the, uh, flag. They will have the flag. They would work with Jenna, um, I guess.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the, the fifth pole downtown, the one that currently has the truth and reconciliation flag is the special event flag. So we could definitely put it up that pole. We have been looking for a Métis flag, so that works out really well.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I was just wondering if that's the right spot, but I guess we don't have room out here in front. It's just that it'd be easier to have sort of a celebration here instead of on Main Street if there's lots of people. Is there any way we could raise it here and move it to Main Street?
Oh, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem. There, there is, uh, with, the flag is actually right beside the parking lot outside of Caesar's. So there, if we'd block that off, there'd be lots of room.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I'll leave it up to you guys to, could I have a motion to?
Sure, I can make that motion, but can I ask administration to make sure that the flags on the other poles are sort of replaced so that they're all new and look appropriate at the same time?
Yeah, like Canadian flags ragged here.
Yeah.
Some of the flags are in pretty poor shape.
Yeah, we'll review them right away here. We'll make sure they're reviewed before Remembrance Day as well. I believe we have a Remembrance Day flag that'll go up that pole for November eleventh. So that'd be right afterwards. That would work out nicely.
Could I have a motion? Oh, Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. So no, no, no notice of motions? Question period. Do you have a question? No? Uh, oh, yeah, correspondence for information? All in favor? Someone want to move it?
Sure.
Oh, Carrie. Counselor Jessman, thank you. All in favor? Carried. So now we will have a motion to move in camera.
I can make that motion.
Counselor Welke? All in favor? Carried.